This meeting of the planning commission's order. First, we wanted to mention, you may recognize that Chairman Settle is not here tonight. He couldn't be here because he's with the families of the officers who lost their lives over the weekend. So I thought it would be appropriate if we started tonight with a moment of silence for those officers and Mr. Settle and as well as everybody who was affected by the events in Charlotte. With that, the first order of business tonight would be to adopt the agenda. And seeing that there are a number of people in the audience, I'm thinking that the topic with most interest, I'm guessing, is the Alnell Farms and Lodge application. So if it would be okay with the commissioners, I'd like to propose that we begin with the other two applications and clear those. And I know we don't have a public hearing tonight, but I believe we have some updated information from the applicant. And in case, I think it would only be fair that we also have a public comment period associated with that application. So if it's okay, I'd like to propose that we move item F, the new business, ahead of the old business. Does anybody have a concern about that, or if not, could someone issue such a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I do move that we move the old business, E, after new business, F.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Otherwise, are we okay with the agendas and any other proposed changes? Okay, then let's.
I'll look at the adopted agenda as a matter of fact.
Second one. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next item of business would be to adopt the minutes from our last meeting. I believe those minutes were posted on board docs and distributed to everyone. Does anyone have any comments or corrections for the minutes?
Chairman, I just have two small typos on names. In the public comment, there's Charlie, this is Jowen, that's actually his last name is, and I might mispronounce his, Jowen or?
Jowen.
Jowen, thank you. And a small typo down toward the bottom, Kick Kohler should be Rick Kohler.
Thank you. Any other comments on minutes? Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Over.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. With that, I'll move to the first comment period for the evening. This will be a general comment period, just for those of you who might have missed it earlier. I don't think we're obliged to hear comments on the old business this evening, but given, I think there's some interest in it, we're going to get some new information, I do intend to open a comment period for each of the applications. So at this time, so if you have a comment associated with any of the applications, I would suggest that you wait for that period, but at this time, I entertain comments on anything else. Yes, Mr. Earl?
Mr. Earl, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I would appreciate an introduction to the new planning commission.
Thank you very much. Get my rudeness, it was in my notes, but it wasn't on the agenda. Let me just first mention and introduce Holly Need, who joins us representing the Wakefield District. I'm going to be prepared to work.
I don't, I'm just, I'm very excited. I think Rappahannock is special, and I look forward to working with the applicants and the citizens and the commissioner.
And thank you, Mr. Earl. Don't hear what he says, Need.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Gene Clemmons from Wakefield. You said a few moments ago that you would offer public comments on the Alnell application. I spoke to Mr. Dammun, and he advised that it was not for public hearing, and it is not. And there would be those of us who do not favor the application, who would have additional information to present, which I understood to be at your September meeting. And so I think many people here tonight are not expecting to be able to comment, and I would suggest therefore that we're not prepared to comment. Thank you.
I appreciate that, ma'am, but we have an open public comment period, so, you know, people could feel free to comment that way. So it just strikes me that it would be more sensible to have that commentary associated with the application. I don't know, commissioners, does this cause any concern?
I don't have any concern with that.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other general public comments before we move to the new business? Okay, then I will close the first public comment session, and again, switching the agenda around, we will turn to the two items of new business, starting with specialty use 170701, the, sorry, is it Rigel?
White soul.
Family apartment application. Administrator, do you have any introductory remarks?
The applicant is here. If the commission has a question for him, but it is family apartment. The applicants indicate that it will be in their basement, that they will create this family apartment. They are aware of restrictions and so forth, such as signs, and of course, that will be examined at the time of building permit submission to make sure they're in compliance with that.
Thank you. The applicant wants to make any remarks? With that, I'll open the public comment, and I'll ask that if you have public comments, you try to limit your time to three minutes. We don't have a huge agenda tonight, so we'll try to be as accommodating as we can be, but please limit yourself. Are there any public comments? Yes, sir.
I spoke to David, and I don't know if that got related to you all, but the reason we want to do the apartment was for my mother-in-law, my wife's mother, so that she has MS, we want to be able to take care of her. So we want to have that as a family apartment, or we can have her in-home, take care of her that way. So that's the reason for the apartment.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public comment period on specialty use 170701, and turn to the commissioners. Mr. Berry, do you mind? I want to start on the third end of the table.
This seems to me to be a very reasonable use, and in some ways, it doesn't seem to involve any real change to the building neighborhood, whatever. And it was something that I would think we would enjoy and celebrate that families are taking care of one another.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, I apologize. I think our standard practice would have been to offer you the opportunity to go first. My apologies.
This does not meet any of the standards of a family apartment. This is in the house, and they should have been able to just get a building permit and do that without coming to us, because it meets no standards of a family apartment.
I believe the issue might be that they intend to add a kitchen.
I assume they will determine how to use the hall.
I believe that you're creating a separate dwelling unit, which would include a kitchen, it would be a separate matter. I believe I perhaps defer to others. But I take it that if you don't feel they should even have to have been here, that you don't have any opposition to the application?
No, I have no opposition to them getting a building permit and doing the job, and to come into us, because it meets no standards of the family apartment.
Thank you. Mr. Wazinski?
I'm craning my head here because I'm looking at the floor plan. It does show, looks like it does show a new kitchen, and that the square footage listed here, 1,111 or 71 square feet, both under the 1,200 square foot threshold. I believe there's also, there's a separate entrance, correct? I saw a picture. So from what I can see, it seems to meet all requirements for a family apartment, and I like Mr. Burr's comment that it's commendable. Thank you, sir, for the family apartment.
Thank you. With me, will there be comments?
Only that I agree. I did have a question about the accessory space, it wasn't included, but David's answered my question, so.
And I too have similar sentiments as those already expressed, so, Mr. Brown, might we turn to you for a motion? I recognize that you might not feel that they need the permit, but assuming that you support it, would you care to make a motion?
Make a motion, we recommend approval.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to specialty use 170702, the David converted Thornhill to the apartment application. Mr. Berrick?
And this likewise is a family apartment for Thornhill's son, starting off. This is a little bit unusual, and I did find something I have a chance to talk to him about. The structure that they're going to use, they're actually renovating an old barn, and it actually is more than 200 feet away. So we initially thought it might be a BZA. However, there is a provision that says excluding renovation of existing structures, no such family apartment shall be more than 200 feet from the main residence. So I believe we don't have to worry about that aspect of the application, and it's fairly straightforward, family apartment otherwise. And the applicants are here for any questions.
Thank you. Before we open it for public comments, the applicants have any?
Yes, for my son and daughter-in-law, they just moved back to the county about a month ago. About a month ago, they're working at the family farm with David and CG, and we want to provide this for them, to get them on their feet. And I also have an aging mother, she's 82, and in the county, she's definitely going to need extra help, and by that time, I can see her moving in and leaving out. So it definitely would be a family apartment for a while.
Thank you. With that, I'll open up the comment period for specialty use 170702. If you have a comment, please state your name and the address or the district where you reside. Any public comments on these applications? Yes, sir.
My name is Phil Fletcher, Greenmont District. I'm in support of this application. I'm not in the Thornhill family, but it's probably been here longer than my family, and I can say that about as many people. David has served on this commission before, and did good service, I believe, for 10 or 15 years. His son left here, and now they'd like to bring him back. And the son went through a great amount of tragedy, which I'm not going to bring up again, but they're both sons of Rappahannock, and I asked this board and the BZA also, I believe here at this nomination, to do anything they can to support this application. They could have gone the right route of a family subdivision, as a matter of right, split off two acres, but the Thornhills don't believe in splitting up the land. They'd rather have it kind of as a family compound, I believe, and they're good people, and even do, helping would be greatly appreciated, and should be done for the government of the county. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll close the public comment period on specialty use 170702. In terms of commissioners, lady and gentleman, this applicant is in my district, and I did have the pleasure of visiting the property and speaking to the Thornhills about it. And I fully support it. You know, it is a family around the area. With respect, I mean, I think the only consideration really that makes us anything but a, for a real slam dunk, is the, potentially the distance, and as David pointed out, there's probably an exception for an existing structure, but to the extent that that doesn't carry the day for some reason that's not apparent to me now, I would also note that the BZA also has the authority to grant a waiver from the 200-foot limitation, given special topographical conditions. And I would note that, having visited the property, it is exceedingly hilly, and I believe that the topographical conditions also warrant our recommendation that, if necessary, the distance be waived, because I see no reason this could be a detriment to the public interest. So those are my views. Mr. Wazinski, turn to you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any, I'll follow your lead on this, but note that what you brought up in the way of topography and existing structure, I know it also seems there's a family cemetery with this between the house and the barn that might also create a, you know, concern for the distance.
It's one of the few flat spots.
I don't think we want to disturb that. We didn't, yeah. And I think I mentioned it is a 20-acre parcel, so I'm in support of it.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
I'm in support of it. Okay, so Mr. Berry?
I also am in support of it. It seems like this is the sort of effort that we would like to encourage.
Thank you.
I completely agree.
Great. Well, with that, then I would offer the motion to approve specialty use, or recommend for approval, specialty use 170702. I'll take it a second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. I guess both of those applications go on to the BZA. Is that new?
Yes. Running for it.
Thank you. So if either of those, if you're for those applications and you care to step out, you're welcome, if you're otherwise agree, join up the rest of the meeting. Turning next to old business, we have before us the Alnell Farms and Lodge Conference Center and venue application. This application was discussed at the June, June 21st meeting, I believe. Unfortunately, I was not present at that meeting, so I will catch them up to do. But it is, we had recommended for you to come back to what's at stake. Corrective advice? I'm sorry, Mr. Berrick, you can tear this up for us.
Yes, this was a deep table, June 21st, and the applicant has come forward and has been put into paperwork, board docs, with some new information regarding this. So I will have Mr. Brown speak on this and present this new information and any other information regarding the application that you wish to present.
Thank you, Mr. Dammun. Mr. Chairman, ladies and lord, Michael Brown, the law firm Walker Jones, are representing the applicants, Alnell Farm and Windsor Lodge Stables, LLC. Since the June planning commission meeting, as Mr. Dammun indicates, we've submitted additional documentation in support of the application for the event usage. Questions pertaining to the safety and use of Jericho Road to access the property have been addressed by VDOT, specifically Randy Norris at VDOT, and that's after his receipt and review of a stopping site distance study performed by Dan Clark of Clarkland Survey PC. Those emails confirm that Mr. Norris has reviewed that and has no concerns regarding the use of Jericho Road for proposed use. We've also submitted, as in your materials, a letter prepared by Ann Speaker, Washington Volunteer Fire and Rescue Chief, who addresses the accessibility of the property by fire and rescue vehicles, and that there are no concerns, again, with the use of Jericho Road. Right, and specifically the bridge that appears on Jericho Road between Zachary Taylor Highway and the entrance to this property for passage by emergency vehicles. We've also provided you an exchange of email correspondence with Mike Costello. There was some concern raised at the June planning commission meeting regarding the fact that Wakefield County Basin's track team sometimes uses Jericho Road for their practicing, and he has confirmed it would certainly not be a concern it is. And if they, to the extent that they use Jericho Road, which he states is not very frequently, they could certainly corroborate that with the applicant on those rare occasions when an event that the applicant might be hosting and the Wakefield's track team might have plans to use that road. We've also provided to you, in response to, you know, concerns raised at the planning commission meeting, and also that were heard at the board supervisor's meeting, a list of proposed conditions that will be attached to the approval of this event center application. Those appear in my July 18, 2017 correspondence, and I trust that you all have a copy of that. They're specifically designed to address some of the concerns and make sure that there's a clear understanding of the limitations that the applicant, the applicants themselves are proposing be put in place in connection with this application. I won't read them all verbatim, but just the benefit of those independence. Again, we propose that the number of events will be limited to four events, and those will be between the dates of April and November 30. Again, four events total, not four events per month, there was some misunderstanding about that. In all cases, the events will be limited to 200 persons. Events would not start before 8:30 a.m., they would wrap up by midnight, and there would be no amplified outdoor music after 10 p.m. There would, of course, would be sufficient lighting to ensure the safety of, safe environment and safety of the tenants, but all lighting would be down shielded, keeping in line with the desire to preserve our dark skies here in the head. No additional signage whatsoever is proposed. The applicant would also commit to maintaining the alternative means of access to the event site across the Alnell Farm property. That's another, you heard that in the other meeting, that's another way to get into the farm directly off Zachary Taylor Highway in the, we believe extremely unlikely event, that a fire and rescue situation would have any trouble accessing the event site via Jericho Road. In his publication materials, the applicant would make clear to provide clear directions to the entrance to the farm, to Windsor Lodge Lane, via Zachary Taylor Highway, and actively discourage coming in off Oppose Road, which we understand is a more problematic way of accessing the property, although it is public access. Of course, the applicant would comply with any VDOT recommended safety requirements, and we would ask that the planning commission consider recommending a time limitation on this application. There, again, there's, if there's concern about the long-term impact of these events, which we don't believe there should be any, that it's always appropriate to suggest that a time limit be imposed, and in which case, the applicant can come back in a couple of years, if he comes back for review, and there's an opportunity to see if there have been any issues. We submit to you that this application is certainly consistent with the zoning of the property under our zoning ordinance. It is not in conflict with, and in many ways complements, the comprehensive plan of the county of Rappahannock in promoting clean tourism, in employing individuals here, supporting other businesses here in the county, thereby bolstering the economy, bringing in a little bit of tax revenue. And we hope that we can get your support in recommending approval of this, forwarding it on to the board of supervisors, or at the very least, passing it on to the board with no recognition.
Thank you. Thank you. And recognizing again that we don't have a formal public hearing, we seem to be wanting to give every opportunity for, and we may be here to be heard, I will open public comments that feel, don't feel that you need to repeat things that you've said in the past. We got it, it's on the record. But with that, if you have public comments on this application, please state your name and your district.
My name's Gus Forebush, 39 Foxhole Farm Lane, Wakefield District, plenty of. I'd like to welcome Holly. I've known Holly for a number of years, at Warnton, and so be a real asset to this commission. I'm not prepared, I apologize. They could be, I, I apologize. My petition here has run, but I don't have copies. Most of y'all have seen it. Holly, you have not. I'd like you to have it. There are a number of names on it, about 90% of the neighbors are on that petition. I'd like to get that back, or that's my original. In June of '08, Corey Corral applied for the very same application, special that's beyond Jordan River Farm. At the time, it was met with such opposition, he withdrew his application. Mr. is assumed they were opposed to it at that time. Now she wants to do the same thing. The bridge, Mr. Brown mentioned the bridge. The bridge has no issue here, there's no problem with the bridge. It's a curve leading up to it. VDOT has put a 90-degree sign there to warn people of that curve. And I've said this before, Holly has not heard this, but if, God forbid, there's accidents there at night, 12 o'clock, when his parties are letting out, drivers could be impaired by alcohol. There's an accident, that road gets closed, they have an alternate route through the farm. I know it well. Fire truck can't get over it unless they upgrade it, build a bridge there. Fire truck cannot go up, go across it, Indian Run, especially the water zone, and up the steep hill, it's not possible. So over 100 structures are at risk down that road, if that road is blocked. So, and God knows how many people. So this all has to be considered. So thank you very much.
You.
I'm really a tyrant. I live at the other end of Jericho Road, on North Pose, across from Betsy Parker. Freddie loved Upperville, Freddie clearly loved Upperville because of what was happening in Upperville. I love Middleburg because of what was happening in Middleburg. Move down here, hopefully be in the land of dark skies, quiet nights, great horse The GPS would probably bring people right along North Pose Road, which is six miles of gravel road, down to Jericho, and then up to Coolies' property. We have a ton of deer, a ton of air, a ton of people who really don't know how to handle a gravel road. People drive way too fast down there already anyway. I already have enough strangers that drive onto my floodplain, who I hate to take out in my river on a 90-degree day, because they're there with their children, I don't know what to say to them. So I ask them to please find other public access. The people that drive onto the floodplain are ready, they do the ULEs in the floodplains, they think it's fun at night. They disturb my horses, my dogs start barking, my dogs disturb my neighbors. More than traffic, it's the pollution, there's going to be more litter, more people, more environmental impact. In fact, if I had my druggers, I'd put a tollgate at both ends of our road. Thank you.
I'm Betsy Parker, and I live directly across from Billy area, and I like everything she just said repeated.
Sorry, ma'am.
I'm Sandy Forebush, 39 Foxhole Farm Lane. I have contacted a real estate firm, Washington Buy Properties, and have been told today, after talking to all the agents in the office, that if this proposal were to pass, that if in the future, my farm was for sale, being left to my daughter, that they wouldn't even show the property if it was across from a commercial venue. It wouldn't even be saleable, and they wouldn't even show it. And they will come and speak at the next meeting.
Anyone else care to speak at this time? Okay, hearing none. For the comments, I'll close the comment period, special exception permit. Please, I know you're pressed to turn your body, but this is your district, and if you have comments or want to start us off.
Thank you. This application has been filed since April, and a lot of work has been done on it in the last four months. And because of that, and I just was appointed nine days ago, I don't feel up to speed, I don't- I don't think it would be fair to the commission, to the property owners, or to the neighbors for me to insert myself at this point. So, I intend to abstain from voting, but I do have several comments should the commission want to recommend approval on the proposed conditions. My overarching comment is one that I have heard with the several event kind of applications that are going on now, and is this the right category? And I don't know what the answer is to that. Seems we've had three event applications recently, and they've all three been filed under different sections of the ordinance. So, I have questions about that. But related to the proposed conditions, number one, they talk about the four events in a year, and I don't know if it's worth specifying that these are one-day events. You know, sometimes things could run a weekend, and I wouldn't want them thinking that weekend is a one event. Number six, it talks about emergency services, coordinating with emergency services. I think it would be important to consider requiring notification to the sheriff's office and VDOT and emergency services 30 days in advance of any event. I do know VDOT, you have to put signs in the road, you have to get permits, and the sheriff's office, if you're coordinating traffic control. And I do agree, a time limit, I think it should be, should you want to recommend approval, a short time limit, based on everything that we're hearing. And I wouldn't recommend a renewal that would go straight to the zoning administrator. I would recommend one that would have to come back through the full process. So, that's a different section than referenced in number nine. And that concludes it.
Will you put down to the other end of the table, Mr. Bird?
It seems to me that the limitations that have been expressed here are considerable and, I think, very valuable. And I think that in this situation, that there ought to be, as has been expressed, a follow-up meeting to deal with any problems or difficulties that have been associated with this.
You're referring to the review period?
A review period, and it would seem to me that this would be something that could be done perhaps this fall after the, any events were to have been had.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. Mr. Brown, do you have a comment?
Still, I have the neighbor opposition. My main concern is, did you ever talk to your neighbors? Do you know your neighbors? Have you ever told them what your plan was instead of just trying to jam it down the That's my main concern. Do you know your neighbors? Have you talked to your neighbors?
Mr. Brown, are you looking for an answer to that question, or are you just stating your concern?
That's my concern. That's all I have.
Thank you. Julie Zinski?
Mr. Brown, I, you know, I know I probably missed this, but I was reviewing the package and the emails and everything in there, if there's a reference in there to Mr. Norris' letter on July 6th about the stopping distance, but I didn't see it in there. Does anybody have that, or is that the?
It's, I gave the package. It's embedded in the email, Mr. Zinski. You did, you know, Mr. Norris didn't send us a hard copy? I mean, I can look at mine.
I even kind of was looking at the email traffic, and I couldn't find, couldn't pick that out. Now, I'm having technical difficulties here. So, if you have a hard copy of that, I just want some kind of put eyes on this email or...
May I approach this one?
Yeah, thank you.
It's not prom, but that is in his response, where he pointed out what you have submitted appears to be adequate. VDOT has no issue with it.
Okay.
And it's not a particular problem, I think, so.
Okay, and that's his, that's his comment on the?
That's his response to after us having submitted the stopping site.
Stopping site, you know, Mr. Clark's information.
Yes, sir. There was an earlier communication from Mr. Norris on June 20th.
Right.
Where he had reviewed the additional materials, and he didn't have a concern, except that he recommended that, you know, perhaps we have that stopping site business study done. So, Mr. Clark compared that, we forwarded it on to Mr. Norris, and that was his reply on July 6th.
Yeah, I think I saw these conditions, but there's something there where the applicant is going to make it known, there are events that the access is going to be off 5:22, and that's going to be...
That would be prom, what they proposed to do was prom, posted on their website and all of their material, customers, recommended customers, inscribing directions to the event. All of that would consistently represent bringing traffic in from Zachary Taylor Highway.
And they have notified GPS, and they're working with?
Not quite. Not quite. And they said that they're going to send you through the main roads. They're not going to, I mean, that's the way it works. It's not going to send you through unpaid roads in the end. I do have the email from that, which I can forward to.
I've actually Googled it and found that to be the case.
Yes, yes. She Googled it too and sent it to me, so.
And is there a, is this a business for the dedicated manager of these events? Is there a specific, it's you, right?
Yes.
You are, you are, you are the manager of this event?
Yes. And I've already talked to the, you know, the sheriff, and she's a bitch, she can help out for events too, so.
You are going to have people direct in traffic everywhere. It will be well taken care of.
I only have two other comments, Mr. Chairman. I noticed that the time for the events are 8:00 a.m. to midnight. It seems, I don't know, I don't know if there's any flexibility on the 8:00, but that just seemed, it seemed early, if we're talking about weddings, but if there's...
I think you're talking about bringing the equipment, that's enough.
The thought, the thought line of Mr. Zinski, again, I know that there's been a lot of talk about wedding events, and certainly that's one type of event that the application is. But there's also, which I think is an intriguing idea, is hosting business, you know, business-related business retreats. For example, our firm came out two months ago and had a day-long business retreat and had green field in. It was, you know, it was great. And I think that's also one of the kinds of events that they're thinking about. Those are the kinds of events that we would anticipate maybe starting, you know, earlier. And without, I'm sure that applicant can be flexible with the start time if the commission and the board thought that that was appropriate. But just to give you the idea of the rationale on why then that was a...
Government meetings and stuff.
Now, you're lying.
We know a lot of people, they ask.
And then my, my only other question is, that's been expressed, and that is some kind of review period or time limitation. I don't know if it's suggested a time, but a period, but maybe a year. Maybe after a year, but that's just my, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Zinski. I was just trying to get my hands on the application. With respect to the time constraints, there was another time constraint on music. Am I right about that? Is there a?
10 o'clock.
There is a separate time limit on the five minutes of the conference. I share some of the concerns. I do think it's a reasonable use, and certainly four events with 200 people, to me, property of this size is, does not seem overly impactful from my point of view. Would I, I would like to clarify, though, there's a reference to a site, and is it intended, and I know the application says that we know additional construction, but there is a built venue there that would be used for this, or would everything be either tented or outdoors?
Tented, outdoors, for business meetings.
Okay.
The location of the proposed tent, Mr. Light, is shown on the, on the materials that were submitted. There's a full-scale, I hesitate to call it site plan, but it's a site sketch prepared by Mr. Clark, and that's there. It's right, it's adjoining the small log cabin structure that was approved as the tourist hub.
Thank you. You know, in terms of the application itself, it would, I would be more comfortable if we had a more precise layout of where that is and exactly where the parking is, but given the scale and the overall layout, I do, it's pretty obvious that it works, especially since this site has been used in this, in this regard. I would also comment that, you know, I did Google how to get to this location from DC, and it does take you Jericho Road. You know, I think it is important that we be sensitive to the neighbors, but I think we also have to strike a balance in that between listening to the concerns of the neighbors and giving them serious consideration versus giving neighbors a veto, or whatever, over such a thing. So, I am inclined to support the application for approval. I would also say, if we were to move this, I would want to make sure that all of the conditions and description in the application would become part of the permit and would be binding on the applicant. I think that's a standard affair. So, I don't know if anyone's thought through this enough to be prepared to make a motion, but I would certainly entertain that if anyone asked. I believe you said you don't intend to make a motion. If you're not, I guess if you're not going to vote, you probably don't intend to make a motion.
Chairman, are you reading down a list of conditions that we discussed at all?
Are they the same conditions that are on this Walker Jones, kind of one to die?
It sounds to me that way, except for this meeting indicated perhaps clarifying that the events should be called one-day events, so that they're not...
I think that's important, if I'm...
Yeah, which was always our intention. And then there was, she raised a question about the intention to fire EMS, perhaps VDOT, the sheriff's office. I don't know if commissioners feel that's important or not, but she's certainly glad to entertain that as well. We're already intending to work with Sheriff Compton on events in any of them.
I, getting back to the point about amplified music, I personally would also favor an additional limitation that amplified music extends no longer than a period of four hours. I think for the types of events that we're talking about, we're not talking about music festivals, I think we want to make sure that we're not getting into that. So, it sounds like that would be a reasonable application, that restriction.
Yeah, it takes 10 o'clock, four hours of music.
So, I would propose adding that. So, without necessarily enumerating these thoroughly, I think we've got the ones offered plus clarification that the, it's for one-day events in a given calendar year. In addition, on item three...
Item three, isn't that the right time? Is consistent with other, these planning commissioners, that, that 11 o'clock, under other circumstances?
I think we have, as I recall, and I don't know...
Eleven o'clock is...
I know we have differentiated when music needs to be turned off, and a different time for when, you know, it's, or the light's out. Are you referring to the music-off deadline, or the lights out?
Music was off at 10 o'clock.
And the question then is, was there an additional, you know, everybody gone? I mean, once the music is off, you know, how do you judge the end of an event? You could have people leaving for some extended period. So, to me, the operating point is, yeah, right.
You tell them to leave.
Believe we're having, been in this situation, you would be telling them to leave. But the, seems to me that the period of most concern is the period of, you know, music and amplified activities. So, to me, if we limit that to four hours for any, for any given event, and, you know, I would even be willing to say four hours between the hours of noon and 10:00 p.m. Because, not that you can imagine having music at 8:00 a.m., but...
No.
I see no reason not to impose that. So, I would propose that the restriction be...
No, I think I got misinterpreted. Eight o'clock, like, say, a government has a park outside, you know?
I understand, I understand the intent, but again, we're trying to also be mindful of the unanticipated. So, I would suggest that we include a restriction that amplified music be limited to not more than four hours for any given event, and that those four hours reside within the period noon to 10:00 p.m. Seems like that would be acceptable. And we could oppose it if we think it's important anyway. I like the idea of the notification to the sheriff's office as part of item six. I think that actually would be just a, an application to notify something already prior to, oh, prior to, you're saying?
To the sheriff's office. Well, and add to have the sheriff's office, too.
And the sheriff's office. Mr. Dan, could you?
Yeah, let me, we have a review period, one year, and it would come back to this body, Planning Commission, review, VDOT, sheriff's office notification, what's that, 30 days?
That's his suggestion.
Suggestions, 30 days. Clarify that one-day event is just one day, not extending to a weekend. That the, that the events be held no longer than four hours at some point between noon and 10:00, with the amplified music lasting for no more than four hours in that period.
Yeah, I don't think, I think the event, recognizing that they have quiet events planned for some of that time, I don't, I think the event time starting at 8:00 a.m. is okay.
Okay.
Really just, my intent was just to restrict the amplified music.
Between noon and 10:00.
Yeah. Okay. And, you know, the other thought, gentlemen, was, I know we've asked about this with respect to an onsite manager, but I do think it's important that, that be a requirement as well, that there is a, an onsite representative of the owners onsite at all times during events.
I'll leave that for the smart one, actually.
Understood, but intentions sometimes go astray.
That's why.
That's why we're... And the one-year time period seems reasonable to me. They're only talking about doing this through November, so if they were to get started, it would take about a year of a spring, that would give us a fall and a spring cycle.
A couple of months after April 1, 2018.
Right, yeah, so we'd have, we'd have a fall and a spring cycle, considering. And I would also note, I don't know if this is, I think this is, it's not up to require this, but that the, that the operation be conducted consistent with the description in the application. I think sometimes that is overlooked, we want them to do it the way they've said they're going to do it, for the events that they've said they're going to do. So, with all that, do you have a motion?
Did you run that one? Do you have any thoughts?
Well, if we, if our approval is for a conference center, and the application for the conference center said, we would like to use this for business meetings, weddings, and, you know, in any way of specific kinds of events, I would like the, that to be a condition. And I think that's a, I don't know what the legal standing of that is, whether it would be assumed to be such or not, but I would rather be explicit about it. We had this on other applications where maybe it's a little bit more important than here, but I think it's important that we don't allow applicants to come in, describe something that's, and have a lot of, sort of voluntary, you know, we intend to do this, it's our, we plan to do that, and then we don't require that, and then they change their mind. I don't think we should... I don't think we should allow them to change their mind very much when they come in and they specify these, these characteristics.
Or that they could apply for a different...
They could, that's what I think, that they could come back in if they, if something in their original application ends up needing attention. That's my intent to that. It's a pretty sloppy motion. I don't know, do you want, gentlemen, do you feel ready to vote on it in that form? Would you like to torture, or some administrator to try to repeat the condition again?
I would like to hear it, I would like it. A review period of one year, it would come back before the planning commission. VDOT sheriff's office notification, thirty days in advance, clarification that the events are for one day only, amplified music for no more than four hours at a time between noon and ten PM, onsite manager for the events, and the operation conducted as described in the application.
Thank you. Okay, I would change that to no more than four hours. When you say at a time, you might have several four-hour interludes, if you did it just no more than four hours between...
Per event.
Per event.
And those are in addition to the ones that were...
In addition to, this kind of gets to what's in the application for... Any... So, we do have a motion. Move that, did I...
Does your new motion, do you make that motion?
I will move, I will, I will accept responsibility for that motion. I will second it. Gentlemen, the motion's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? See if by what saying, aye. Any opposed?
One aye.
One aye. Mr. Brown, I don't think I caught your vote, or you...
I don't know, we'll leave it like that.
Okay, so two ayes, three ayes, two ayes. Thank you very much. Next stop is the, which is, I mean, I think we're...
Chairman, our next, is she here? Believe it's you.
I was actually, they're next, so...
Sorry.
I just forget, I think it's the...
Gentlemen, it's for the board. Gentlemen, I didn't hear the motion.
Please, I'm learning.
You make up...